Good evening, everyone. Going to open the Inlands, Wetlands and Water Course Commissions for the Town of Trumbull for July first, two thousand twenty-five. I will ask our clerk to do a roll call if she would.
Richard Gerard.
Present.
John Loria.
Here.
Carmine DeFeo.
Present.
Rich Deacon.
Present.
David Vresby.
Present.
Greg Cernica.
Present.
Bob Fredno.
Present.
Town staff Tatiana Solovey.
Yeah.
John Mayer.
Here.
And attorney Jim Cordone.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Colleen. At this point, I will turn it over to our attorney, James Cordone, to give us the legal aspect of conducting a Zoom meeting, if you would, sir.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As is the practice of this commission, the meetings are being conducted remotely over the Internet and by telephone. Tonight's meeting agenda and supporting application materials were posted on the town website in advance of the meeting. Um, when you, uh, when the public hearing is in progress, so you may raise your hand electronically to be asked, uh, to, to speak, and I'd ask members to please be identified by the chair uh, prior to speaking. I'd ask all votes to be by roll call unless unanimous, and tonight's meeting is recorded. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. All right, we're going to old business continuation of public hearings. Uh, application twenty-five dash ten and twenty-five dash eleven. Uh, we received a letter from the applicant's attorney, uh, Chris Russo, asking for continuance and, uh, also, um, agreeing to an extension. And that will be going to our September two meeting. Um, I need a motion for the continuance and, uh, Attorney Cordone, we can do both together or do we do separate?
Uh, I think, Mr. Chairman, before we vote to continue the hearing, we probably should um, have a vote on the LEP issue, and then we can continue.
All right, what has happened is that, um, Tatiana went out and we did some initial testing and, um, there's definitely, you know, some issues there. So, uh, I've dealt with LEPs in the past and I would like to propose that we bring in our own, uh, it would be paid for by the applicant. And, um, so at this point, I would ask Greg to make the, uh, motion to, uh, for a, uh,
Okay, I make a motion, um, that we, uh, hire,
Engage.
Yeah. Engage, hire a LEP, a licensed environmental professional to, uh, work on application twenty-five-ten, twenty-five-eleven. Um, and who may also have to engage with, um, the applicant's LEP and, uh, DEEP.
And that gentleman would work with, uh, with and under the guidance of our, uh, town engineer. All right, I need a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, it's, uh, John, yes or no?
I am not voting on this one because, uh, I didn't see the first meeting.
Okay, very good. So we've got six, uh, yes and one, uh, abstention. Thank you, John. Okay, so that passes. And then, um, so I said Attorney Russo, who's the applicant's attorney, uh, has given us a, uh, letter to ask for continuance and is agreeing to an extension of the application time, so. Again, Greg, need a, uh, motion for
Yep.
Acceptance of a continuance.
For applications twenty-five-ten and twenty-five-eleven to, uh, uh, continue the, uh, public hearing and, um, on, which will be held on September second, two thousand five. Uh, the applicant has uh, requested the continuance and granted us an extension.
All right, who would like to second? Okay, Carmine's seconding, all in favor? Okay, again, six yeses and one abstention by John Loria.
Uh, no, it's five-four. I'm against both votes.
Oh, you are? Okay, I didn't see your hand up enough time. Your beer got in the way, I'm sorry. All right, so it's five yes and two, uh, one, five yeses, one no, and one, uh, that's insane. Go ahead, uh, David.
Why is this not being, uh, tell, why are we not telling them to withdraw their applications? Because they do have variance applications and planning and zoning issues that need to get resolved before any wetlands issue applications can be approved.
Which is exactly why I voted against.
Point, I'm going to turn it over to our town attorney.
Thank you.
Sure, all right, so I, the, isn't, there's not a prerequisite that the zoning matters be, uh, decided first. If anything, state law requires that the wetlands application needs to at least be filed simultaneously with it, requiring wetlands to be decided in some instances first, so there is no requirement for that. The outcome of this may also determine that there may not be a variance, that things, things may change. We don't know what's gonna happen, so I think-
But right now, they're, they have a violation on multiple fronts, violation with ZBDA, planning and zoning, wetlands, multiple violations.
Correct.
Um, in a standard application, I could see your point. Um, but I don't see why we should be approving or even hearing anything that's still got bigger issues to be resolved.
Well, I, Commissioner Vresby, I, I think one might say that the bigger issue is what you guys are dealing with here in this commission, which is the environmental issues with respect to the, the wetlands. So what we're, what we're doing right, and there, there has been a stop-work order, um, and violations have been sent out on zoning and on wetlands. So no further activity can take place at the property. So that, that has, um, that has happened since the last meeting. And we've received the environmental report, which was just, uh, discussed. They've retained an LEP, you've just voted to retain an LEP. So that process probably should unfold in this commission first. And then the other, the other applications uh, will likely be impacted by what happens here. If the, if the wall remains, then they'll need certain variances perhaps. If the wall doesn't remain, then that, that, or gets moved, then they would, it wouldn't be necessary. If fill is removed, then there might not be a need for special permit for fill. So I think what happens here is probably more, um, impactful to the other applications than vice versa.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Plus side, we've got two months, so they, they should be able to accomplish, uh, you know, quite a bit over that period. Okay, go ahead, uh, Richard.
On my cursory review of the materials which were filed or were, were created by June fifth, yet, as we said, for a number of reasons, we didn't receive till today. There are, I looked at sample four, which seems to have been arbitrarily a four-point-five-foot uh, test pit, and you kind of roll the dice on, maybe they're throwing darts at a map. Hey, let's do four-point-five, let's do six feet. There's no rhyme or reason to the depths of the test pits. But there was one containment, it was a hundred and forty-two times above the legal limit. And you gotta ask, well, how long has it been there? Because I joined this commission in the year two thousand oh-nine, and these properties were up for debate back then. I mean, it's sixteen years, who knows how long it was before me. Um, it's just been over and over, continuance, continuance, will come back, stop-work order, somehow got lifted, now they're back again. I mean, a wall got built under our noses. Uh, maybe it's a good wall, maybe it's not, we don't know. And it's just over and over. I don't know about you, but I would assume the neighborhood wants answers. Is it gonna be approved or not? I'm sure they're sick and tired of the runaround. I, I'd like to see final answers. Um, it, it's an incomplete application. A lot of these, not just this application, but many developments come forward with incomplete applications that don't have the information, and they magically at the eleventh hour get submitted. Oh, can we have a continuance? It happens every time. I don't know about you guys, but I, I'd love to see a complete application at day one that we can actually look at. And when a hundred and forty-two times the legal limit of some contaminant I can't pronounce is there, we're all looking at each other, oh, what do we do? Hopefully this LEP goes in there and gets this cleaned promptly and on their dime.
Well, that's why DEEP is involved, and believe me, I've been through this three times with them on remediation. I don't know if Attorney Cordone has, uh, has dealt with them, but I can tell you, they're very, very thorough. And, uh, so that's, I'm, I'm think it's fortunate that we'll have them also, uh, viewing it. And that's the other reason we're doing our own LEP, because I don't want to do a hit and miss. Because Tatiana, Tatiana went out and just arbitrarily chose seven sites, and one of them, she said the smell was so putrid. So, you know, again, none of us are LEPs, so that's why we're gonna do that.
And I'm not in any way impugning Tatiana's choices. She, she's not the one, I'm, I'm angry. I just want her to know that, that the arbitrary depths of the pits are the location. In no way am I saying that's Tatiana's fault. I'm saying it should be consistent. It's, uh, that's all. Sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm saying it was her going out there that actually triggered this, so I give her kudos on it. Go ahead, David.
Will we be doing off-site testing to see if any of these contaminants have migrated into the wetlands and downstream?
Again, that's, uh, when DEEP gets involved, that's pretty automatic with them.
Okay.
Because anytime there's wetlands or if there's, uh, underground water, I've got one of the properties they take care of. It's been under a seven-year water compliance order. And they're saying that the water, uh, has arsenic and a few other things, and we couldn't do a well. Well, this property happens to be on the Post Road in Westport. There's never gonna be a well there, but that's what DEEP wants, so, you know.
That's what they got.
You can't, you can't fight the state, so. All right, I see Carmine's hand up. Go ahead.
Um, in looking at these fifteen test samples, the left column, contaminants, not one sample is the same as another sample. There's fifteen different columns. Why is that?
And that's why we're asking for
Because it was used as a doll.
LEP that can compare notes. It's like when we go out, we get, uh, you know, two and three soil scientists involved. They never seem to agree. They have their own, uh, you know, conjecture on, uh, what is and what isn't wetland, so that's why, hopefully this gentleman that we hire, or lady, will be able to give us answers, because they're also gonna peruse the, uh, applicant's, uh, LEP. And I'm quite sure-
I would like it, I would like to see if we can ask our LEP, what is, what state guidelines are there as far as what's to be tested for?
Again, they'll do a proposal.
They apparently picked and chose, picked and chose what they wanted to test for in each of these samples, and it, it makes no sense to me.
Oh. Again, that's why, you know, to protect the town, that's why we've just voted to bring our own LEP. And once we get the proposal, I'm quite sure I'll look at it, Tatiana, and of course Attorney Cordone will make sure everything is, uh, kosher, as we like to say in my old town of Westport. All right. Any other, uh, questions, comments? Okay, because otherwise, we're gonna move on to the other application. We're good? Okay, we're going to application twenty-five-dash thirteen, Joseph Giuliano. It's a revised permit approval for restoration plan within a regulated area at seventeen Applegate Lane. And as previously mentioned, this is a public hearing also, so. Tatiana, do you want to give your thoughts first, or should we have the applicant, uh, go through it, and then we'll address it?
Uh, I'd let the applicants present first.
All right, very good. Okay, I see, uh, you have several people. Who's going to, uh, speak first? Uh, Mr. Danzer?
I, I, I think I'm going to default to Tracy Chalapho for now, and I'll, I'll follow up if there's any questions.
All right.
Record, this is Tracy Chalapho. I'm a landscape architect with Tracy Chalapho LLC, based in Danbury, Connecticut. Is my volume okay?
Yeah, just a little bit higher, I think.
Okay, thank you. Um, if I may share my screen. Everyone able to view this?
Yep, now we are. Go ahead.
Okay, so, um, we have revised the site plan to just be a wetland restoration plan, um, so references to the proposed swimming pool have been removed from this plan. Um, however, something that we wanted to plan for, um, that was brought up by, by the town engineer was, um, to plan for storm water management. So the, the sort of largest new component you'll see to this plan is this proposed rain garden in this sort of naturalistic shape. Um, based on calculations prepared by Manny Silva, uh, PE, he determined that a six-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot rain garden would be needed to handle the runoff from the existing driveway, and also to plan for the little bit of runoff that would be generated by, i-if, if a future swimming pool is approved, um, this is sized to handle that as well. Um, so that's this area here, and the proposed depth for this rain garden would be twelve inches, and it would be planted with native plants, which I'll come back to in a moment. But, you know, digging into, um, the most important aspect of this application is the removal of the fill from the conservation easement area. So this same, very similar to the last restoration plan that you saw, um, this hatched area is the fill to be removed to bring the topography back to predisturbance conditions. And another important aspect is, um, the two thousand sixteen lawn limit line, which Tatiana was kind enough to provide aerials of for us and some dimensions. So this dashed line here that I'm tracing over is, um, the two thousand sixteen lawn limit line, as accurately as we could draft it on here, so right along here. And to prevent further encroachment into this area, it was also staff recommendation to include some permanent demarcation. So we're proposing boulders, naturalistic boulders of a thirty-inch to thirty-six-inch diameter minimum to be placed twenty feet apart. So these are, these dark blobs are these demarcation boulders set generally along the two thousand sixteen lawn limit line, except for where they dip back here to the arborvitae hedge. So at the last meeting, the commission requested that we increase the native plantings, and that we have done. Um, the plan before you indicates twelve proposed trees, so that means one additional tree was added from the last plan. And this plan indicates forty-four shrubs, and so that's an increase of eleven from the previous plan. And then one hundred and thirty-seven perennials to be contained within the rain garden. On the previous plan, there had been no perennials. So within the rain garden, we have plants specified for the bottom of the garden and also for the side slope, side slope. We just wanted to differentiate species for different moisture levels. So the proposed trees are back here, one, two, three, four, five. Those are native trees. And then, as you previously saw, um, the owner desired to extend the existing arborvitae hedge, so he's asking to plant seven additional green giant arborvitae here to help with the screening of the school, it's actually to the south, and, um, to help buffer some of the sound. Uh, any areas where fill is removed from, the soil suitability will be checked, and also there's gravel being taken out, and it would be seeded with wet mix at any area within I'm, I'm gonna apologize in advance, there's a thunderstorm rolling through. I really hope I don't lose you, and maybe I'll talk a little faster in case I lose power. I just saw a flash, so. Um, so wet mix would be applied to any disturbed areas within the wetland. And then, um, we've considerably increased our restoration area from the previous plan that you saw. We're pulling the lawn line to here, as I'm tracing over. So this is the proposed lawn line, and where you see this hatching, the speckled hatching, that is area either to be seeded as native wildflower meadow and maintained that way, or an area just to cease mowing. So this is the line where the manicured lawn meets the naturalistic area that is not to be disturbed. Silk fence would be installed at, at the su-at the, um, southern perimeter of the work area, and it's anticipated that the spill is gonna be removed by rubber tract machinery. However, around any existing trees to remain, it, they should be excavated by hand with a shovel. And there is one dead maple that the owner's requesting to remove. That is right here. Okay, so I think that covers the restoration plan. Just to summarize, the fill depth we've estimated to be zero to twenty-four inches. And the gravel depth is an estimated three to twelve inches, and that's here. And the owner is requesting to keep the existing arborvitae hedge and berm and the gravel on the down slope side, because that's providing stabilization against the erosion that was happening from this, um, this storm drain structure and the associated basin with it. So I'm happy to take any questions at this time, or turn it over to Dr. Danzer. I, I'm not sure if Manny Silva is on this call. I can't seem to view him, but if he's here, you may have questions for him as well. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Tatiana. Do you want to address this now? Do you want to, uh?
Um, sure, so uh, the dead maple tree that is marked for removal from our walk, it appeared that that's where the fill sort of ended. And so when I look at the plan with a hedge extending beyond that, it's a little bit confusing. Um, as if it's showing a lot of disturbance in the wetlands that perhaps maybe hasn't been touched. So could you please clarify? Maybe I'm not connecting the dots here correctly.
Um, well, first of all, this tree was approximated, so it may not be in the exact correct location. So it's just noted approximately. Um, so one difference, and maybe I should have mentioned this, is that previously, we had the hedge extending here, the seven new green giant arborvitae were here. And then we realized with them being down slope, it wouldn't be as effective for screening, so we nudged them up slope. And I think the, the other thing that, that, um, I should clarify is this is where these proposed contours, three thirty-one, um, three thirty and three twenty-nine, this is where we actually have to tie into the end of the existing arborvitae hedge that we're asking to keep. So that's here. And then from, I'm gonna approximate from about this point where the contours sort of occur, from this point on, the proposed contours are representing the returning to the two thousand sixteen topography, like restoring it back to the predisturbance conditions.
Okay, thank you. Um, it, it may be needed to walk it again for me personally, but anyways, uh, I think the last meeting, um, the commission has asked that um, really the restoration goes to two thousand sixteen contours, and it appears that a lot of it is still beyond uh, and in the wetlands. There is just a massive disturbance in the wetlands. That's one note. Um, second, very minor, you had mentioned, and actually I haven't seen that the perennials are for rain garden. Uh, it, it would be nice for the future, maybe just for people that don't speak plants, uh, to provide a kind of clarity as to how it's planted, because upon completion of the project, we kind of have to look at that rain garden. Um, and also, uh, perhaps it could be beneficial to either elongate or reshape the rain garden, because right now it's tucked in the corner, and I know the pool is not on this, uh, application, but for the future, I assume it would be closer to the house. Um, and so just connecting it to the garden, to the rain garden, first of all, it's kind of extra piping or extra disturbance, and plus all the runoff from the lawn um, is still going into the wetlands with the rain garden just being in one corner. So I'm not sure if, if that restoration could go in and buffer the whole wetland area, uh, maybe that could be looked at. Um, I did see engineering plan with the underground system for the driveway, so thank you for that. Um, and so, yeah, I see that the wetland flags eight, um, no, eighteen, I'm sorry, I can't see, but where the gravel is.
Eighteen and nineteen.
Yeah, they remain, thank you, in the fill area. Um, and typically, not even for after the fact, but for proposals, there is some sort of, um, a remediation in terms of, you know, if you're filling wetlands, then typically a three-to-one ratio is returned. So I don't know if that could be created on this property. Um, and, yeah, it's just that what we've discussed last time is kind of mm, mm, not, not actually what, um, we're seeing here, so. That concludes my summary. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tatiana. The number one thing that I saw, and I'm quite sure, sure the other commissioners most, all the plantings are done in the wetlands, and we frown on that. They should have been moved outside of the wetlands. That's my thought, so. The, or no, turn it over to the, uh, commission member to shout out, uh, because I can only see part of you here.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, David, thank you.
Um, you've got a note on here that says two thousand sixteen lawn limit line, and I'm tracing the leader and really can't figure out which line that's going to. I'm assuming it's this dark dash line that's sort of cutting through everything.
Correct.
That, okay, how was that added to the plan? Was that through aerial survey? Did the surveyor figure that out? What was, how, where did that come from?
Thank you, David, for the question. Um, this, this is from aerial imagery provided by Tatiana, and she also provided a dimension. I, I believe it was from the edge of the pavement to a point somewhere in here. So it was, and, and this, by the way, this line here was also taken from the aerial imagery.
Right. Why was this area that you were just in, uh, where the existing arborvitae's are, why is that area not being restored to the original line?
So this area is the area that the owner had desired to keep the berm and the gravel below it, because erosion was occurring from this existing drain basin. And the engineer can speak a little more about that, and perhaps even Mr. Giuliano can speak about that, what was occurring here. So he desired to keep the berm and the gravel as stabilizing against future erosion.
The stabilization and the berm and the plantings all could have been done at the limit of the two thousand sixteen line. Um, it's sort of a land grab at this point. Um, the, the plantings where the law, where the contours are being restored, I think it's appropriate to do the plantings in that location so that, you know, you're sta-establishing a native pallet in that area, and will hopefully keep away some of the invasives. Um, the proposed native wildflower meadow mix, um, generally when we do something like that, we like to have it mowed twice a year.
Mm-hmm.
In the spring and the fall to try and keep down the small trees, the shrubs that aren't supposed to be there, the invasive species, the rosarigosa, the bittersweet, all that sort of stuff. It keeps that stuff at bay. Um, but I like the inclusion of that. Um, but I like the inclusion of that. Um. You know, although all the plants are great for the the um. For the rain garden, I do agree with Tatiana. It would be great if there could be some minor contouring done. Um, along the two thousand sixteen line that would. Redirect some of that water, even if it's just through the lawn down into that rain garden, uh, so that it's, you know. Providing additional filtration without really going crazy in making that thing huge. Uh, but you could, you could re contour some of this to create a swale to direct water in that direction.
Mm hmm.
Those are my initial comments. Otherwise, um. Um, it's a good selection of plant material. I think it's all very appropriate. The plantings within the regraded area are all appropriate to do there, so, you know, that is reestablishes that that area.
David, what are your thoughts? As I mentioned, that I'm finding most of the plants are in the. The wetlands area, and we don't normally allow that.
Right, but if you're removing fill and you're removing, you're recontouring that area to get it back to where it was.
Mm hmm.
You know, either you're going to leave it as raw dirt, or you're going to seed it, or you're going to come back in and redo a planting. It's it's not uncommon for wetlands restorations or wetlands creation plans. To actually come in and put the plants in in those areas. Um, and our regulations do not preclude planting within the wetlands. Um, it's those, the plantings aren't part of the disturbance and, you know, it's. You know, by our regulations, it's allowed.
All right. Thank you, thank you.
Generally, I would agree with you, but in this case where we're scraping out dirt and we're recontouring it, you've got to put something back.
Well, I came to you because I knew the other commissioners would be thinking the way I am, and I knew where you were going to go on it. So you clarified it for me. Thank you, as always.
You're welcome.
Other commissioners, again, speak up because I can only see part of the commission.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Carmine.
I have a question regarding the plantings that will be going into the wetlands. Uh, do I assume that those will all be done by hand and not with machinery?
I'm actually providing an option of either using rubber tracked machinery. Because the machinery is already going to be there for the fill removal, or the plantings could be done by hand. So it's it's either or.
Can we, um, I can understand the machinery for the trees. Uh, but the shrubs and everything, being that they're closer to the existing wetland. Um. As much as those to be done by hand, I'd like to see.
Okay, thank you. We can certainly write that into the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, anyone else from the commission? Okay, at this point, we can uh move to the uh. Next speaker, whether it be Mr. Danzer or. The engineer, I can't see everyone on here, so.
Yeah, Chair, I would like, this is Manny Silva from Roast Tiso. I'd like to supplement a little bit here. Um, so.
I'm sorry, Mr. Silva, give your spiel, please.
All right, thank you. Uh, this is Manny Silva from uh Roast Tison Company, representing the applicant at thirty five Brentwood Avenue, Fairfield, Connecticut. Um, could I just share the screen real quick? Um, here we go. I think I need, there you go. Um, so, um. One of the things, one of the mitigating fa- things that we, in addition to the rain garden, you can see here on my, uh, this is actually an AutoCAD drawing. Um, one of the things that we did was we, Tatiana and the commission asked us to uh mitigate some of the water quality. Right now, the uh, the entire driveway, which is about, um. Uh, that, you know, it's a pretty large paved area, was just going to a leak off and then discharging directly into the wetlands. And one of the mitigating things that we've done, um, one was we decided the rain garden to not just uh accommodate. Any future development with the pool, which was around four hundred and thirty cubic feet. Um, but we also accommodated the water quality volume for the driveway, which is an additional two hundred and thirteen uh cubic feet. Um, we had some discussion with staff, Tatiana specifically, um, and she wanted me to create an option. Of also just dealing with the water quality volume with an underground gallery system. Uh, adjacent to the uh, the driveway itself, instead of piping it across the site to the rain garden. Um, one thing, uh, so we are proposing uh some sixteen millennial feet of. Four by four gallery to take care of that water quality volume here, which then in fact, um, in turn makes the rain garden a little bit oversized. Um, now, because this two hundred cubic feet is now being treated here at the. Uh, gallery, we have a kind of a swale that a collection pond or a swell here, so that to ensure that the water does go into this yard drain. Um, so that will increase the water quality from the existing condition, which is not really part of the violation, um, because this, um. This untreated water was always discharging into the wetlands directly, so we're taking care of that with water quality. Um, if there was a pool here proposed, uh, one of the concerns is about directing water towards the rain garden itself. And if the commission remembers, uh, one thing that I like to use in this proposal had in the previous application where the pool was included. Was uh gravel uh curtain drain around the pool itself, so any drainage that would come off of this area. Would essentially be caught, would be collected by that curtain drain, which is, which was per- uh around the whole perimeter of the development. And then that would have been, that would be directed to the rain garden itself. Um, again, it could, like one of the commissioners stated, it could be an extension, uh, this could be elongated or an extension with a swale. Um, but again, um, I think if a pool was to come in front of this commission and I was the engineer, um, I would have a curtain drain. Um, that would pick up uh any surface water into a gravel trench. And then into a perforated pipe that then would direct it to the uh rain garden to kind of just. Put your minds at ease as to uh if of any water that would be directly discharging to the wetlands. We would, uh, if that development would happen, we would make sure that everything would be directed towards that rain. And that's it for me.
Any questions from the uh commission, from Mr. Silva? Okay, uh, did Mr. David, I saw you poke in. Did you have a question? You're good? Okay, Mr. Danzer, are you uh going to speak?
Um, actually, I'm just here to answer any questions about the about the wetlands, which I, at this moment, I don't think there is. Um. I don't have anything to add as far as the planting plan goes, or the restoration plan. Tracy covered it all.
Okay.
The chair got a comment?
Go ahead, John.
We've seen two plans, and one plan has. Water detention or rain garden, but it's missing the detention on the other end of the driveway. So which plan are we really voting on? Or is it a combination of these two plans?
So, uh, this is Manny Silva again. Um, we were going to just use the rain garden itself, um, um. But when in conversation with staff, uh, Tatiana asked me to add an alternative where. We have a underground area, underground gallery area, just to, just to take care of the driveway itself. And that, and treat that water as a mitigation measure. Um, it's up to the commission which one you prefer, but I believe Tatiana prefers the uh gallery uh scenario.
At the end of the driveway we're talking about?
Correct.
So have you submitted your plan to Tatiana? Do we have it submitted to the local commission right now? Or is it just on your computer?
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Tatiana.
We do have a plan from the engineer, and I also want to mention that the original plan. Uh, had a cage basin at a leak off location, and then it was piped all the way to the rain garden. And it is not shown on the landscaping plan, so. It it's typical on the applications to have engineering landscaping plans separately, but at the end of the day, it would be nice to kind of combine them. And make sure we're all on the same page.
We're redefining the main plan as well in this meeting, and it's not actually clear what we're going to do. Uh, increase the length of the rain garden, but I don't see it on a plan that's been submitted. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, John.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, David.
Um, in my previous comments, I had made a comment about the existing arborvitae's and the push out there into the wetlands. Um, what is the commission's feeling on that? Are we just going to leave, let that be and leave it alone? Or do we feel it's appropriate to pull that edge back to the original two thousand sixteen line? What is the commission's feeling on that?
Well, I mean, I can speak my thoughts is that, uh. Last uh, last meeting, we simply asked them to reestablish the two thousand sixteen. On limit line, which they haven't done. Um, wetlands flags at eighteen, nineteen. No re, and, hey, excuse me, no reme- remediation has been proposed on that. And, um, so I think, you know, there's some more work that I see here. So I will ask the rest of the commission their thoughts.
And Mr. Chairman. Yes, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. I think, uh, the appropriate step that you're mentioning, I think we should follow.
For the record, that's Bob Frig. No, go ahead.
I think just in my last comment, I was starting alluding to that, that the, these things are still not finalized. And I, uh, I think we have a little more work to do. I think we're getting very close. I think the applicant needs to resmith plans from last time with things that we discussed.
Yeah, and for the record, that was John Loria. Okay. Comments from the rest of the uh commission? We're good? Oh, go ahead, Greg.
Yeah, the question I have is the existing arborvitae's, would we? Be pushing those back? Apparently, the uh applicant is more, his biggest concern right now is screening. So he's just wants to plant as much as he can, uh, from what I'm hearing, for screening and noise. I guess the question is, um. Can they do that at the two sixteen, the year two sixteen line? I don't, I don't know how long those things have been in the ground. Um, you have the old ones and they're presenting new ones, but. Uh, I guess, do you make them dig up the old ones?
Uh, to the commission, if I might address that. Um, I think the probability of recycling those um arborvitae's. That are established right now and replanting them, um, is very, the likelihood of them surviving is probably less than fifty percent. Um, I think you'd have to start from scratch, and I think there was a couple of reasons why the um. Applicant was hoping to retain them at the current location, and one, that was one of the reasons. His concern was he just didn't feel it was right to pull them up and start from scratch. You might think that, you know. Uh, otherwise, but I think that was his thinking. The other thinking was, um, like it or not, you know, understanding what he did. Um, lacked proper authorization, but the fact is, is that he's now created a slope that is stable because he had an ongoing erosion problem. Um, that's not to say that if you pull that back and um. Restabilize the slope, that you couldn't restabilize the slope if you pulled it back to the twenty sixteen. But but similar to the arborvitae's, I think the applicant was looking at that and saying. Um, why should I have to do that if I have a perfectly good, stable surface? Um, and I think, um, the current design plan kind of took that. We've always been open about the applicant's desire to leave the arborvitae and that slope in its place. Um, we've never hid that. Um, we've advocated that in the prior plan. We advocated it in this plan. We realized that there might be some difference. There's an opinion between, you know, what the applicant wants and what the commission wants. But because of that, because we knew about that, that's why we proposed a robust mitigation. And if you look at the uh, the corner of the restoration plan, um, around the con- around the proposed rain garden. That extra area was actually offered as additional mitigation or compensation for the fact that, um, that the applicant would be. Um, you know, that you would consider allowing the applicant to retain the slope with the arborvitae's as as is. So we kind of factored that into it. And the final point was with the rain garden, um, the applicant, um. You know, generally went with the town engineer's suggestion that they should, um. Um, filter the uh, the existing runoff from the driveway, um, but that was an elective step. That was never a part of this original application. The applicant went along with that because for two reasons. One thing, it seemed, you know, the right thing to do because you have untreated stormwater going into the uh wetlands under existing conditions. But the second reason is we figured it would be additional mitigation or compensation, um, you know, to to. So we could go forward with a straight face and ask for the, oh, those arborvitae's and that slope to, to, to. To continue. That was part of the the mitigation. I mean, the applicant didn't, did not have to uh treat the stormwater. You know, maybe when he got around to, if, you know, went forward with uh, with the pool application, um, then that would be fair game. But at this stage, the applicant, the applicant, um, was not legally or statutorily required to treat the runoff. Um, but he chose to, chose to do it. He was hoping to do that to get into the, you know, better graces of the commission to allow to retain the the slope. So if you factor into those, those, you know, those three factors, um, I think that's. His argument, um, for retaining the 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 slope as it is.
All right, Tatiana, and what we're discussing right now is the wetlands flag area, eighteen to nineteen, which. Um, that's in a uh filled area. And as I remember, we wanted that pulled back. Can you address that?
Uh, the commission did ask for our two thousand sixteen contours to be restored. And I hear, you know, the applicant had made some uh other uh actions to address engineering concerns. So, um, I wonder if that there could be, um, another alternative that perhaps satisfies both. Uh, could, could the applicant consider if they were to keep the arborvitae's and but provide commission with the. Um, another alternative plan, and I'm actually going to share my screen for one second. Because I did a quick, um, area takeoff. And I just want to see if that's what the commission is also concerned about. Um, so, oops, sorry. Between two thousand sixteen contours, very roughly to the limit of the gravel is about a thousand square feet, give or take. So that's the area in question. Um, and there are some low mow areas. I didn't count rain garden because it's going to be utilized in the future, but it, this area is just kind of smaller. Um, and again, as I mentioned before, the commission typically looks for three to one ratio. And maybe that's not applicable in this case, but could there be something if the rain garden is elongated? Re, um, located, are there any other remediation actions? That the team could look at and present to the commission so that everybody is happy? Would that be possible?
And so we're looking, the proposal is a three to one uh ratio, uh, for, uh. Remediation that would uh allow the. Arborvitae's to still remain. So is that something that, um. The commission thinks, uh, you know, it's possible, you want to do a round table. We'll go item by item, but go ahead, Rich, you're the first one up. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, the arborvitae's have been planted. We don't really seem to have been given any good reason to uproot them. Um, my concern with remediation, I expressed at the last meeting. Simply flooding an area, calling it a wetland, doesn't really accomplish much other than extending the wetland limit line. To some innocent neighbor who now is within a hundred feet, didn't think they were, and suddenly, well, more of their land is within a hundred feet. Um, and it accomplishes very little in this particular case. I feel like ordering this applicant to do so is somewhat counterproductive. Um, I think there are remediation actions that can be taken to keep that slope there. I think Tatana's point about maintaining the three to one slope is valid. Um. The rain garden's going to be used in the future. Um, I I I don't personally see the the point of over remediating a property. When uh, it's not going to have any direct impact, just to say that we, well, we made them remedi- Just to say that we, well, we made them remediate it. Well, you know, we had so many square feet. It has to be functional. Just simply throwing this at an applicant, I, I feel like is, uh, again, counterproductive. So, you know, maybe somebody can convince me, or maybe somebody can, uh, create a better alternate plan that everybody's happy with. Sending them back to the drawing board for two months seems like the, the problem itself is gonna stay there longer. That's all.
Bob Sanders up. Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about two things last meeting. Remediation one, it's restoration was the other. I'm not sure if we're addressing restoration. I think you're referring to, Rich, is remediation. I think the commission made an emphasis on restoration too. I'm not sure if we're addressing it. We discuss remediation alone.
Go ahead, John.
Uh, to, to just your concern, Rich. This mitigation isn't very destructive because I don't think we're taking down any trees. A lot of cases, when, when you try to do mitigation, you're in a pristine area. And then you wanna build a wetland, but you have to destroy a pristine area to put one in. I don't think here, we're adding, we're increasing the size of this detention basin that's in a lawn area. I don't, I don't see what's so, so wrong with what we're doing here. That's my comment to you, Rich.
Do you think? Sorry, John, could you, could you repeat that last part? I didn't hear it. I'm sorry.
Well, I was saying, we're not doing any mitigation or remediation in, in a pristine wooded environment, right? We're doing it in a lawn. So I don't feel that when we put in a rain garden in a lawn area, that it's, it's really detrimental to the environment. However, is, as I've said many a time, you don't wanna do remediation when you're gonna take some pristine piece of property and try to make a wetland there or join it to an existing wetland. And it's really, it really is probably gonna be a failure. And so, but this isn't the case. And you're asking for some guidance. So that's why I'm chiming in.
All right, well, after the commission speaks, one of the things that was brought up, uh, was possibly extending the rain garden because I remember Tatiana feeling that, um, and again, Mr. Silver would address this, that would be insufficient, uh, if we got overflow and all that, so.
Through the chair.
Go ahead. Go ahead, David.
You know, I agree with a lot of the points that have been made about, you know, what sleeping dogs lie. It's, it's, you know, this area is stabilized. Do you create more harm by moving it? I hear all that. This was a blatant land grab, in my opinion. But I do see the, the alternative points and the need for some alternative resolution. Tatiana, could you share your screen again?
Sure. Okay, here we go.
The, there's a hook in the line by the existing arbivides, that two thousand sixteen line. Go down, there's a sort of a corner there, right there. Uh, where it takes the ninety degree right there. If you connected that corner with the end of where they've got the new seeded area back at the lawn limit line, just basically did a straight line from there to there. You know, move it back up towards the, the house a little bit, right there. And the boulders line, the no mow grass, the wetlands were all included in that area. Basically, the boulder lines follows that red line. And that becomes the, all right, you, you can keep your arbivides there. You can keep your land grab. But, you know, as a part of this, we're going to, you know, create a, an area that's off the edge of the lawn. That's gonna be set aside with the boulders. That will be your no mow grass. The rain garden will be in there. You know, that's the, that's the trade off.
Um, David, what kind of would go there? Would it just be wild grass or what? What are your thoughts?
I mean, it could be the meadow, but I, I think establishing the boulders at that line is important because then it becomes the, the line of permanent demarcation where, you know, they're not going past that. You know, if the, those boulders aren't there, then it becomes, oh, we could just mow it. Sort of thing.
That's what I'm asking. Once you've got the boulders in place, what's happening from the, that section from the grass to the wetlands? How would that be finished?
That could be the no mow meadow grass where they can mow it twice a year and, you know, it's, it's supposed to be kept more in a wild state than, you know, manicured lawn. But if we did the square footage on that, I think that's gonna be close to your three to one.
All right.
Who did the rain garden in it, probably?
All right, let's do this. Let's keep that up on the screen and let's go and ask the commission what their thoughts are. First person I see is, uh, John, what are your thoughts? You agree?
I have, yeah, I like David's idea there.
I think it's a good solution. How about you, uh, Rich?
I'll accept it. I think that even less remediation is needed, um, just because restoration should be the focus, but David has a fair compromise.
All right, Bob?
The rain garden remain the same spot?
Well, that we're gonna discuss with, uh, Mr. Silva and with Tatiana, because she felt it should be extended a little bit closer towards the house. And if not only extended, but, you know, maybe, like, what I'm trying to say is increased a bit, but we'll talk about that in a moment.
Well, will the rain garden be moved, uh, opposite the line farther in, where David's line is closer to the, uh, house? Or will it remain the same?
That would be up for, no.
I think making it longer and thinner and just making sure if it's all included in that area is, is, is fine. And it's really, you know, the
Will it function the same, uh, David, as far as, uh, its purpose being, uh, in, in the tall grass?
Yes.
All right, uh, Greg?
Something.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Bob. I didn't mean to talk over you.
Consider. Yes.
And the planting plan that's been proposed for the rain garden is very good. And all the shrubs that have been selected are, they're all very good selections. I have no problems with the planting plan at all. You know, it's more about, you know, equalizing land areas.
All right, Greg, what are your thoughts?
I think it's a, it's a good suggestion. I mean, we're, it, it's a lot of funky stuff going here. We've got an old easement line that comes back even farther. So, you know, I think it's a compromise rather than ripping up, making the applicant rip up everything he's done already. Um, but I, I think we've got to protect, uh, a few things there. The, the wetlands, the old easement line, the two sixteen, uh, twenty sixteen line. It's, this might be the simplest and, uh, least expensive to do.
All right, Carmine?
I have a question. The three boulders that are in front of the existing arbivides, are those being pulled out to that dotted line? Or where, where does that line, that red line go from where it hits that, that, that dashed line?
Well, let me interrupt for a moment. David, your thoughts, uh, doing the, like, the meadow grass all the way to the, where the three boulders are that he just spoke of, we take that entire area?
I don't think you need to. I think you, Tatiana may have had it right the first place when she connected it to the, the, the edge of the bed. She had it back a little bit farther, which might have been more appropriate. So you could tie it into the existing bed line. You know, again, it's all about making sure that, you know, your square footages are, you know, if we're looking for a three to one, you know, you wanna make sure the square footage is equalized out or play out.
The question is that existing law, the, the existing lawn that's between the two thousand sixteen line and the three boulders, that's, that would remain as lawn? That area there?
I mean, the other option to ask for is say, okay, in front of the arbivides, can you put a row of native shrubs? Which would bump that grass back, say, six feet if they put in, like, a row of something. And I'm sure Ms. Shalafel would come up with an excellent suggestion.
Question to the chair.
Go ahead, John.
Are you proposing moving the boulders and putting them on the blue line? That's what I thought we're doing here.
That's what I would think.
Yeah, but Carmine seemed to have some question about where the boulders go. So we're gonna move those boulders from where they are right now and put them on this new line, wherever we finally establish it.
But it's still the question, those three that are in there by that yellow, are they, is that where you're proposing to keep those boulders? Are they being moved down on the page?
I think we were gonna let them have that lawn there, Carmine. But they're gonna not touch anything after this blue line going forward. If that's the way, I think that's what Dave was leading on too.
That's kind of where I was, that's kind of where I was going with it. I mean, if
The applicant should be happy too because they did pick up that area of lawn too.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a bang straight line. It could have a little curve to it to follow the contours or, or whatnot.
You know what? I think we should make a straight line.
Okay.
If we have problems, we go back and measure a straight line again. Because the contours may
Sure bears like straight lines.
Yeah. Yeah, I would go back to where the dotted line was. I think that would give you closer to your three to one, but.
Yeah.
Could I make a quick, uh, comment?
Sure. Mr. Danzer, I believe, that's
Yeah, no, um, those three boulders, um, near the yellow part of the thing. I'm wondering whether you'd be comfortable with just removing them entirely, whether they're needed because the traditional reason for a demarcation is, is two things, to keep the lawn mowers out. And there's, there's no place for a lawnmower to go there. It's gonna hit a row of arbivides in a steep slope. And the other reason is just visual demarcation, and that's, the arbivides is providing that. I think we'd be fine leaving them there, but I'm just wondering whether they're, they're actually needed or whether we have to worry about if we countersink them, we worry about disturbing the roots of the, uh, existing arbivide in that area. But like I said, if you want us to keep them there, we're, we're fine with that too. I just want to throw that out.
I'm gonna go to David because What was that?
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have fucked up, but I thought we said we were gonna move those boulders in front of the arbivides out to the blue line.
The seven on the left.
Yeah, I, I'm talking about the three on the right.
What are your thoughts, David? Because you're the one that came up with this, um, I, I think it's a very good thought myself and a good idea.
I would agree with Mr. Danzer. I, I don't think there's necess, necessarily a reason to have those boulders in that location. I think, you know, creating the bed line at, at where that bed line departs from the arbivides and we get the, the no mow grass, that's where we need to pick up with the boulders and start demarcating that area. Would you agree with Mr. Danzer?
Yes, yes.
All right.
Just a clarification, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Bob.
So the boulders will stay in place or are they gonna be on the blue line?
No, the three boulders that are there would be removed. The, uh, remaining seven boulders would be moved out to the, uh, blue line and possibly, uh, increased depending upon, you know, what's needed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from the, uh, commission?
Uh, yes, through the chair.
Good, Carmine.
On the left side, where you'd suddenly have a boulder and there's lawn to the left, there should probably be another two boulders going back towards the wetlands.
Well, that's the edge of woods, right there. The, all the way to the left, there's the lawn line, and there's an edge of woods that hasn't, hasn't been cleared.
Oh, that, it's that, it's that far back. Okay.
Yeah.
Fine. That's not necessary then.
All right, uh, Tatiana, your thoughts?
Uh, that sounds like a great idea and as long as the applicant's, um, side is happy, commission is agreeable. I think that's a good path forward for everyone.
Okay, so as we stand, it's, commission think that the applicants go back, make these revisions and, uh, and come back, or do you feel that, uh, we can just make these conditions? I'm gonna go, I, you know, go from commissioner to commissioner. What are your thoughts, Bob? We have to, you know.
I'd like to see revised plans, something in black and white, Richard.
All right, Carmine?
I agree. I think we should see, uh, revised plans.
David?
I will go with the other commissioners and request a revised plan, just so that we, this is all in black and white and nothing gets lost in translation.
All right. Uh, Greg?
Yeah, I, I could live with conditions, but if the group wants revised plans, um, I'm not gonna vote against that.
Yeah, well, I'm for the revised, but, um, Rich?
I'm with Commissioner Sernica. I think we could condition this, but again, it's, uh, it's not something I'm gonna, I'm not gonna die on that hill.
All right, and, uh, Carmine?
You already called me.
No, I'm sorry. I'm looking through here. Um, John, I'm sorry. It just popped back up. I, I didn't have anybody there where I could see.
I'll go with the revised plans as well.
All right, so that's what we'll be, uh, voting on once we vote then. Let's see, um.
Is there any public comment?
Okay, yeah, um, well, before we do that, um, we had talked about extending the, um, rain gardens, um. Let's address that, Tatiana, before we go to Mr. Silva, because the comment we had was whether it would, uh, handle the, um, the actual amount of the lawn there, but they said something about grading or something. I wasn't, uh, you know, fully aware of what they were doing on that. So what are your thoughts, Tatiana? Do you think we should extend it a bit more?
Oh, I, I think, um, Commissioner Varespi had mentioned that perhaps, uh, an elongated rain garden would be beneficial so that not only it is sized for the future pool, but also it captures the, all the lawn fertilizers and runoff, uh, because it's part of the remediation. The goal is to purify it, uh, before it goes into the wetland area. So the, both of those should be looked at, um, and as long as it could be sort of reshaped, and moved maybe to more narrower area.
And in essence, it would help to capture more of the fertilizers from the lawn runoff then. So that's good thought there. All right. Rest of the commission, before we go back to the, uh, applicant's people, and, uh, we haven't asked Mr. Giuliano if he wishes to speak. Did you have any comments, sir?
I do not. I appreciate everyone's consideration, uh, this evening. Thank you all, and, um, look forward to next steps.
All right, um, Mr. Danzer, any comments before, you know?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, and, um, Tracy, are you good?
All is clear. Thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Silva?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I completely understand. We just could just reshape the, uh, rain garden and, um, and I would just like a clarification, um, that you would go with Tatiana's preference of having the galleries at the end of the driveway.
No, I think it's a good, uh, you know, good proposal because it, rather than piping all the way across that lawn and all that, uh, to me, it just makes more sense. Is that something we discussed earlier, she and I, so? All right, at this point, um, we do have a public hearing. So, uh, Paul, is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak? Can you see Tatiana?
Yeah, there, there's one member of the public. Let me bring them in.
Okay. I see a Louise Perkins that's there. If, uh, you would, if you can identify yourself and give your address. And right now you are muted. And right now you are muted. We see on the screen, Ms. Perkins.
Good evening. I'm Louise Perkins. I live at fifty eight Old Dyke Road. Um, my comments this evening relate both to the application that was just discussed, but also the need to. Um, address and reduce violations in the future. So it seems that the spirit of this commission, as exemplified in this evening's discussion, is really to find compromises with applicants. And to penalize no one. Certainly, small-scale, honest mistakes do happen and that should be taken into consideration. But consider what happens when there are no penalties or minimal repercussions for work that's done in violation. In the in the face of minimal repercussions, it seems that more and more owners are conducting regulated activities. First, and then coming to the commission second. And some of these regulated activities are significant. Uh, the application just discussed provides this case study of this issue. Wetlands appear to have been modified to such an extent that no wetland soils remain in previously defined areas. Furthermore, the wetlands have been doubly protected or should have been doubly protected because they stood within the conservation easement. And much of the property is in the upland review area, which is also under the purview of this commission. So, um. Whether the the property owner was notified of the need for approvals by town or not, it's not a main issue. Though it may be a consideration in this case, simply put. The the property owner in this case did not gain approval for extensive work in the regulated area prior to that work's conduct. And should be held accountable for that. I I agree with the commission's. Review and discussion tonight to require the restoration of the wetlands that were eliminated. And to preserve the conservation easement as originally defined before considering any new work. Only after such restoration is complete, is it appropriate to consider a future proposal for further work? And that kind of stepwise approach is important to preserve the commission's leverage to enforce Trumbull's regulations. But stepping back from this particular application and looking at the bigger picture. I would really ask the commission to use the monetary penalties. That are at their disposal when work in regulated areas is done first and then brought before the commission second. This would this would send a message that the inland wetlands and water courses commission is important and it is. By doing so, the commission will be able to step up your effectiveness in protecting our wetlands and water courses. So that's really what I had to say this evening. As always, I want to thank you for your time and all of the effort you put into these reviews. And your work as members of the inland wetlands and water courses commission. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for your comments. And if you've noticed in the past, we have implemented. We have instituted fines and things. And that's something that can be reserved that once we get the revised plans. Or, you know, we could discuss that and see, but. Right now, you know, we've got to see if we can get everything. Done on a revised plan and we'll move forward on that. All right, thank you. Anyone else from the public, Tatiana?
Uh, nobody is raising their hands, so. Not at this moment.
To the chair.
Go ahead, Rich.
Uh, just in regards to what the what Mrs. Perkins mentioned. Um, I think it's important that we maintain the relevance of that conservation easement. And also, um, and this is not direct to this particular applicant, but. Uh, other applicants in the past, especially large-scale applicants and commercial applicants. Have often found it. Better to beg for forgiveness rather than ask for permission. And while we have always intended to not be a punitive commission and not go after people. Uh, especially for somewhat trifling offenses. Um, the big dogs got to pay. And when large-scale commercial applications come in. That flout our regulations or think, well, you know, they haven't fined anybody in how many years? Well, I'm not saying we need to go out and fly the flag and suddenly fine everyone, but it should be abundantly clear that following the regulations. Comply with the regulations. It's very easy to get along with us. Applicants that come in and don't comply. Um, it's it's a bad look for the commission, but also. It makes it troublesome. We don't want to go to court. They don't want to go to court. Let's solve it here. Um, again, this is not aimed at this applicant. It's just as the member of the public was commenting on. The town situation in general, I felt it appropriate to to respond. And I do thank her for her comments. I. I think they're they're very valid.
All right, thank you, Rich. But remember, in the last several months, we have implemented. I can't talk to that. We have initiated fines and one of them was very sizable. And again, when we pass that, if you remember, my comment was, I said, I hope we never, never have to. Enforce it. And again, when it's blatant, that is a tool that we can use, so. All right, so at this point. Greg, I think we'll go for a motion for a continuance and. For the revision of the plans. Are there any other comments, questions? Attorney Cordon, did you have anything to add before we go to it? No?
No, sir.
Other comments from the commission? Go ahead, Attorney Cordon. No, I saw you lean in.
I'm sorry, just I I have no other comments. Thank you for asking.
All right, when you lean in, you have my attention. You know that, so.
Through the chair.
Greg.
Through the chair.
Uh, you mentioned about the continuance, but do we need a time extension also seeing that we won't be meeting until September?
Where do we stand on this, Colleen?
Well, Mr. Chairman, we may just ask the applicant to grant us an extension of the statutory timeframe. If he would be so inclined to do so, so that we can make sure we comply with the timeline.
Are you okay with that, Mr. Giuliano?
I am.
I need a yes. It is replied yes, and it's on the record as such.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Greg is working on the motion as we speak.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion for a continuance of a public hearing of application twenty five thirteen. Uh, revised permit approval for restoration within a regulated area seventeen Applegate Lane. Um, the applicant has granted an extension. Uh, for the statutory timeframe. Um, the next public. Public hearing will be September second.
Second.
All right. Good, I need, are you going to second it, Rich? I see you come up. Okay, so it's saying that by Rich. I'm going to do a verbal vote. I'm a yes. Greg?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Carmine? Carmine? Are you, you're muted, Carmine?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Rich?
Hi.
So that's unanimous from there, so. All right. Like, we're we're good on that. I need a motion to. Close the.
Close old business.
For this, well, the the meeting, we're going to close. We're not closing the public hearing, so.
Make a motion to close old business.
All right, thank you. Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for saving me there. Um, hey, I need, I'm the first one to say I am, I need help, you know, I'm. My wife will tell you I'm a work in progress, believe me. Greg? How are you on the meeting, the June third meetings? Are they good?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion. Oh, are you ready?
Yep.
Uh, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the town of Trumbull inland wetlands and water course commission meeting that was held on June third, two thousand twenty five.
You need a second on that? Okay, see, Bob, Friggnos hands up, all in favor?
Through the chair. Through, through the chair.
And go ahead, Carmine.
Um, might be just a formality, but I am listed down as the secretary. And I believe we voted Greg to be the secretary.
Well, that was, that's Colleen, and it's so hard to get good help these days. That's all I can say. Uh, I will be hiding out for the next two months so she can't find me.
I don't get paid enough.
Now, imagine how depressed I am when I'm finding out that you are getting paid. Oh, my God.
Yeah.
All right. So let's see, there are no field inspections to be scheduled. Colleen, is there anything else that has to come before the commission?
No, there is not.
No. All right, anything I, all right, thank you. I know. I was gonna ask Rich on the. P and Z issue. I know Unity, if you can give us a quick update and the key here is.
It's an election year, so I'll keep it under twenty minutes, but, um, now the Booth Hill and Unity was, uh, the zone change was. Denied on a four to one vote. Uh, I did vote against it. It is no longer an active application because the zone doesn't exist there. If they wanted to build something. They'd have to come back with either new plans that fit the current zone or a different zone change. So the attempt to expand the village residence district zone to anywhere within twenty five hundred feet of exit fifty. Which that number itself will be changing soon. Um, anywhere between that and that distance was rejected. And thus they cannot apply for the fifty homes because it doesn't fit the zone. It's as simple as that. There are paths for them to attempt to do so, to the best of my knowledge, none have been filed. So, um, at this time, there's there's nothing doing there.
Okay, anything else that that might be coming before us? It's before your commission? No?
Up to my knowledge, no, no July meeting, so.
I have a question, Richard. Who voted for it?
Uh, there are three Democrats on the board who voted against it. I'm the only Republican. I voted against it. The Libertarian voted for it. Um, so, you know, that's that's how the vote went.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other comments, questions before we close?
Uh, would the commission, sorry, would the commission like to walk seventeen Applegate again or no?
What are your thoughts? You want to walk? Applegate again?
Would they have to re-flag it?
Well, not re-flag it, but if the commission would like to see where the rain garden is, where the new lawn edge would be. Or any other demarcations.
It's a good suggestion. Let's see, quick, go ahead, Carmine.
It'd be difficult to see the rain garden since the size of it is changing.
Correct, they would have to do their homework first and then.
We could see the general area.
Yeah.
All right, so we're good without it then? All right, so we're good. I'm going to take a quick moment. I don't say it enough, but I am very, very proud of this commission. You all participate. You all really give a lot. And I can't thank you enough. With that said, I move to adjourn. I hope you all have a great day, summer vacation. And we will see you September second, God willing. Thank you, thank you. And Colleen, I didn't mean it. Don't come looking for me.
I know where you live.
I know, that's what scares me.
The ghost of Elijah's Littlebrook.
Have a great night.
Good night. Thank you all. Okay, get off with the zoom, Marino.